I'd like to bring the meeting to order and ask that we'll be called, please.
Blue. Discheroon's here.
Henry.
Here.
Bolshozer, here.
Humble's.
Here.
Wagenbach.
Here.
Wisdom.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The board will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. All right, you might want to form a line. There's a sign-in sheet at the front, but before doing so, I have to read the following. Before addressing the board, I would like to remind you of our guidelines. Per Board Policy 2.230, we ask that when addressing the board, you identify yourself and please be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes per individual. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. It is advisable that individuals under the age of eighteen who wish to address the board be accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public participation portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response that is requested or needed will be addressed by the administration at a later date. It is recommended that to be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality. Complaints against individual students, staff members, or board members either named or unnamed be presented in closed session or be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and sign the public participation sheet. Then each speaker may come to the podium and begin speaking into the microphone stating their name and the topic they wish to address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Allison and I am one of the co-presidents of the Dunlap Education Association. As mentioned in the email that was sent to all board members Friday evening, the Dunlap Education Association is opposed to any proposed changes to handbooks, curriculum guides, and/or policies that have not been developed through a joint committee consisting of teachers, administrators, and/or members of the community or board. All of the current proposed changes should be removed from consideration and the appropriate committee should be convened to draft any potential changes to our handbooks and curriculum guides. Someone once told me that we are smarter together than in isolation. When we work as a team to develop a plan to meet a common goal, which should be tied to our mission and vision, then we are better able to ensure that we have identified and removed as many potential roadblocks and potholes that are in our path towards achieving that goal instead of experiencing them as a result of implementing a plan to achieve that goal that has not been fully reviewed. All of the proposals in front of you now have quite a few roadblocks and potholes that you have not yet identified. Yes, as co-president of the Teachers Union, staffing is an issue that is extremely important to me. It should be to the member of the boards and to the community as well. During the negotiation process, our common goal was to come to a mutual agreement on a contract that would attract and retain teachers. That same mindset should be used here as well. The proposed changes have the potential to have a negative effect on the job security of our current staff members. But your actions taken in implementing these changes could also result in potential staff members not applying for teaching or administrative positions. The proposed changes could also result in teachers being placed in positions that they might be certified to teach but would not be the best fit for them or for the students. For example, I am certified to teach elementary and middle school, and some of these proposed changes could result in no position for me at the middle school level. Maybe the only open position for me to transfer to is second grade at Banner. Even though I am certified to teach second grade, you don't want me as a second grade teacher. And I saw Mr. Fairchild earlier, and he can probably attest to the fact that he wouldn't want me as a second grade teacher either. As important as it is, though, job security is not the main concern that the Dunlap Education Association has in regards to these proposed changes. The first words out of everyone's mouth that I've spoken to about this issue are concerns about how these changes are not in the best interests of the students. You will hear more details about those concerns from my colleagues who will be addressing you tonight as well. These are the concerns that would have been brought to your attention before now had this work been done in committee. You might have some questions for me right now about some of the things I have said here tonight, and when they are finished, you might have some questions for my colleagues. We would be happy to answer those questions for you after the proposals have been removed from consideration and we discuss them in a committee, which is how the handbooks, curriculum guides, and policies have gotten to their current forms. All of the handbooks, curriculum guides, and policies have evolved over the years, and they have done so through the work of dedicated people volunteering hours of their time to serve on committees. By proposing these changes, you have essentially told everyone who has worked countless hours in committees that you do not value their time, opinions, or expertise. I hope my words and the words of my colleagues do not go in one ear and out the other tonight. Unfortunately, I am not confident that some of you will truly listen tonight, and here's why. In August, my fellow co-president, Sarah Solario, and I met with you and extended an invitation to work with you to discuss things exactly like this. As we told you then, we all have the same goal in mind. We all want to make sure students receive the best education possible, but we see things through different lenses. Give us the opportunity to let you understand what we see through our lens. Did that offer go in one ear and out the other? If it had not, then we wouldn't have to be here tonight. I hope you hear us tonight and remove these proposals from consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Solorio, and I am one of the co-presidents of the Dunlap Education Association. Included in the Dunlap School District values and beliefs are honesty, open communication, teamwork, and trust. One of our goals is to foster partnerships to benefit the overall development of the school community. Unfortunately, the Dunlap Education Association feels that the proposed changes wipe all of these goals and values off of the table. Last night, I researched campaign material and public information provided by members of our school board to their constituents. I found a few statements that resonated with me that I feel are in direct conflict with the proposed changes to our handbook and curriculum guide. Here is a collective resume. Work hand-in-hand with teachers and staff of the district to seek their input. Help establish, promote, and promote policies which back up our teachers to have the flexibility they need to maximize students' learning experiences. Listen and share with parents, caretakers, and taxpayers. Advocate for dignity and respect within the board and across all aspects of the Dunlap School community. And ensure civility, professionalism, and transparency on the Dunlap School Board. This resume does not fit the proposed changes sitting in front of the school board currently. I am disappointed that these are being considered and discussed without keeping in mind our common district values, beliefs, and goals. It would seem to me that teacher, administrator, and community member input would be valued having looked over the campaign material and public statements made by those of you sitting at that table. Everyone sitting on this side will agree with me that it is imperative to have a Board of Education that is honest, open, and transparent, which is what your constituents thought they were voting for when they elected you to represent them on the board. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Crawford, and I'm here tonight representing the Dunlap Education Association as the treasurer. The Dunlap Education Association does not support any further physical education waivers at Dunlap High School now or in the future. We believe all students need and can benefit from physical education. In fact, we believe the current proposed language violates school code. The language in school code includes provisions that must be met in order for the student to receive an exemption. Those provisions have not been included in the proposed language. For example, school code states that students in grades eleven and twelve only may request to be excused to enroll in academic classes which are required for admission to an institution of higher learning, provided that failure to take such classes will result in the pupil being denied admission to the institution of his or her choice. It does not allow for students to request an exemption just because they want to take an AP course. That course must be required for admission. The proposed language also would allow for any high school student to request an exemption under those conditions, but school code only allows for students in grades eleven and twelve. I don't think the school board should be advocating for the school district to break the law. It is not just for legal reasons that we believe all students need and can benefit from physical education. Multiple scholars have studied the link between physical activity and academic achievement. Some conclusions of those studies are: A study published in the International Journal of Behavioral Nutrition and Physical Activity concluded, "Physical activity can be added to the school curriculum by taking time from other subjects without risk of hindering student academic achievement. On the other hand, adding time to academic or curricular subjects by taking time from physical education programs does not enhance grades in these subjects and may be detrimental to health." A meta-analysis published in the Journal of Pediatrics found, "School-age youth should participate daily in sixty minutes or more of moderate to vigorous physical activity that is developmentally appropriate, enjoyable, and involves a variety of activities." This article also concluded, "The Centers for Disease Control recommends daily physical education from kindergarten through grade twelve." In an article published in Preventative Medicine, a study found that fifty point five percent of all associations between physical education and academic achievement examined were positive. Forty-eight percent were not significant, and only one point five percent were negative. It further states, "Adding physical activity to the school day may enhance and does not detract from academic performance." For these reasons and many others that we just don't have time to get into, the Dunlap Education Association considers physical education courses to be just as important as the academic courses we offer. The Board of Education should be searching for ways to implement more opportunities for our students to be physically active and fit in the same manner that it searches for ways to implement more opportunities for other subject areas. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Melissa Harrison, and I'm a proud DEA member and teacher in this wonderful district of Dunlap. And as such, I've been asked to speak toward board policy. I believe I've been asked to do that because I'm a dinosaur. I'm so far out of any technological loop. I don't do social media. I don't do anything. When issues arise, I go to policies, manuals, written texts, and you have a meticulously constructed board policy. And I just wish to call attention to the wording because it's very clear. It leaves very little room for interpretation. Words are chosen specifically for the meanings they wish to convey. And with regard to point two point two of the board policy regarding powers and duties of the Board of Education, it lists approving the curriculum textbooks and educational services, evaluating the educational program, and approving school improvement and district improvement plans. With regards to board member oath and conduct under two point eight, I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Dunlap three-two-three. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student. In two point eight, it mentions, "Under board member code of conduct, I will represent all school district constituents honestly and equally. I will strive to keep my board focused on its primary work of clarifying the district purpose, direction, and goals in monitoring district performance." These are crafted so clearly. They were not crafted haphazardly. Your policy book is extensive. It had time put into it. It was thought through and worked upon by educated individuals with a common goal of making this district strong, and it's worked. It's worked very well. Under six point four, curriculum development, the school board is responsible for curriculum adoption and must approve all significant changes, including the adoption of new textbooks and new courses before such changes are made. The superintendent or designee is responsible for making curriculum recommendations. Under curriculum review program, you are to include input from a cross-section of teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and students representing all schools, grade levels, disciplines, and specialized and alternative programs, which I believe we understand to be the key to everything. The more input we have, the more informed decisions we can make. Under the six point one-three-five accelerated placement program, you are to implement an advanced placement program that includes decision-making processes that are fair, equitable, and involve multiple individuals, assessment processes that include multiple valid reliable indicators. From my five years in this district, I have never seen an advanced placement program more effective, yielding the results it does and bringing these students to the forefront of achievement. Under six point two-six-zero, complaints about curriculum instructional materials and programs, it suggests that persons with suggestions or complaints about curriculum, instructional materials, and programs should complete a curriculum objection form and/or use the uniform grievance procedure. You have the groundwork that has been beautifully crafted. It has not been crafted without thought behind it, and all I ask is that you trust the so meticulously crafted language that's in your policy so that we might continue to provide excellence and continue to be the flagship of this district and create citizens who are happy and successful in contributing to society. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tom Olson, and I am the instructor of the Advanced Placement AB and BC Calculus classes. I've been teaching for twenty years now, sixteen in this school district. Let me start by saying that I want what is best for our students. Last year, forty percent of my BC class scored under the national average, and five of my students in that class did not earn credit for the nine months of work they put in in my BC Calc class. Without an adequate passing grade on the AP exam, a student will need to take calculus in college again, adding time and cost to their studies. Over the last few years, it has become increasingly difficult to help my students meet their goals. Any student who completes trig pre-calc honors has a choice -- excuse me -- between AB or BC calculus. There is no other prerequisite in place. The ratio of AB to BC students across the nation is two to one in favor of AB, but that number is flip-flopped at Dunlap. There are twice as many BC students than AB students because many of our students do not know how to appropriately place themselves, which puts them in a poor position to experience success. As juniors, they were given data as guidelines to consider. I compiled this data from previous school years, and it showed a direct relationship between grades earned in trig pre-calc as a junior and AP scores of seniors. The data often falls on deaf ears. How can seventh-grade students and their families be expected to choose the correct pathway for themselves when high school juniors can't do it? The proposed Middle School Enrichment Services document aims to give our seventh-grade families the same freedom of choosing their eighth-grade math course. All prerequisites have been eliminated in this proposed document, and it states, "Parents will have the final say as to whether their eighth grader will take eighth-grade math, Algebra I or Algebra I honors." Algebra I is a difficult material, and it is a foundation for success in high school math, including AP calculus as well as AP chemistry and AP physics. If a student is not academically ready or mature enough to handle such a rigorous course, then they are setting themselves up for a very difficult trek through our math curriculum the following years at Dunlap High School. Prerequisites are in place to help protect the uninformed and guide them to a decision which helps the students flourish, not flounder. Yes, I understand there's language in your proposal which allows a struggling eighth-grade math student to move to a lower-level math class. The last spring, I had five seniors with the opportunity to sign up for a lesser exam, the AB exam, but they chose to stick with the BC course. These five students could have moved, but they chose not to and missed out on an opportunity to earn college credit. How many eighth graders in our school district will be placed in a class over their heads by proud parents? How many will stick it out when they're struggling to maintain a B or a C? How many will filter up to the high school and have below-average algebra skills? The current prerequisites may not be perfect in your eyes, but they help guide and place many students in the correct math class. Secondly, I would like to address the suggested change in allowing students to take advanced placement classes for a pass/fail grade rather than a letter grade. Once again, I want what is best for our students. Moving from a traditional grading scale to allow students to experiment by taking an AP class without the worry of losing their four-point-oh GPA is setting them up for failure on the College Board's exams in May. Students are grade-driven. If the bar for an A is set at a certain height, then most students will learn the material and do the work required to reach that bar. Students who aspire to earn credit on AP exams taught at Dunlap High School need to do A work during the school year in our classrooms to give themselves the best opportunity for success. Setting the bar lower with the pass/fail standard will undoubtedly allow many students to relax, but to what detriment? Given the extra freedom of a pass/failing grading system, will our students still hold themselves to the same high standards as before? Some will, because it is their nature to do so. Yet there's a population among our AP students who only do the bare minimum to achieve the desired result. Lower the standard of excellence by making AP classes pass/fail, and Dunlap High School will have made the College Board's coveted AP honor roll for the very last time. I want what is best for our students, and instituting a pass/fail grading system for our AP classes will not help our students succeed at exam time in May. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Baker. I teach honors chemistry and AP chemistry here at the high school. I have thirty years of teaching experience and eleven years' experience teaching AP chemistry. The last seven of those teaching years, including AP, have been here at Dunlap. I would like to speak about achieving success in our AP classes. I speak as one of thirteen current AP teachers in our school. Together, the thirteen of us have one hundred nineteen years of experience teaching AP courses and two hundred fifty-three total years of teaching experience. We are highly trained, experienced professionals that are really, really good at what we do. Yes, we know our content. We share that knowledge of Spanish, psychology, history, and even the beauty of chemistry with our students every day. But what we really know is kids. We know what kids need to be most successful in our classes and on the AP exam. The AP teachers that I represent want our students to step into the AP exam in May with confidence that they'll earn a three, four, or five on the exam and have the knowledge to back it up. For them to attain that requires an entire year of well-crafted experiences in the classroom. This isn't something that happens overnight for teachers. It is a result of years of effort, training, and experience in the classroom. The proposed changes in the document that are up for discussion by the board committee will not create a classroom for the level of success that we want our students to achieve. The parameters that exist for taking individual classes, both prerequisite classes and certain years in school, sophomore, junior, senior year, are well-thought-out by our professional staff to allow students to succeed. In AP chemistry, we expect students to have completed honors chemistry as well as honors level Algebra II and trig classes. The level of problem-solving and difficulty is different in our honors classes compared to the regular classes. In order for students to be ready for AP chemistry and not start the year with a large gap that will grow wider for the next nine months, they need to have those honors classes. The prerequisites are there because we want our students to experience success. The overall proposed changes do not create a plan for AP classes which encourage success. Rather, it will create situations in which students are in over their heads, experiencing incredible frustration and stress with little way to correct it. Please stop trying to make these kids be something they are not. Accept them for who they are and where they are. Just because your son or daughter doesn't take AP chemistry or BC calculus doesn't make them any less of a person. I would also like to address the changes from the -- I would also like to address the changes from the viewpoint of a parent. My wife and I have lived in the Dunlap School District for more than sixteen years. We have a twenty-four-year-old son who graduated from Dunlap and currently have a son in the eighth grade at Dunlap Valley. We are pleased that Dunlap has classes that address multiple levels of learning with the appropriate rigor for the class. As parents, we want the district to have standards for what classes can be taken. Do we understand AP classes and what it entails? Sure, we're both teachers, and obviously, I'm pretty deep into the AP world, but I know many families in our district that do not understand that level. My concern is that they will be putting their child in a situation that is aimed toward failure. I ask you to please work with the fantastic professional teaching staff and leaders that we have in this district. We are here for all of the kids, and we want them to be successful in the situation that is appropriate for them. Let us help them reach their potential in a way that fosters confidence and success. They deserve that from all of us.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Hanson. I'm a French teacher here at Dunlap High School as well as department chair of foreign language. I've been here for ten years at Dunlap, but twenty-three if you count that I went here K through twelve. And it's here at Dunlap that I actually began my journey to become bilingual. Our department recently took note of a change the board wished to make in the handbook, highlighting the fact that students can take a proficiency test in a language they've studied at an outside program in order to earn foreign language credit here at Dunlap. Now, this is board policy, and as such, we do, of course, work with the rare student who has such proficiency in order to make sure that they are adequately tested and awarded credit. However, what I want to discuss with you today is why we encourage all our students, even those who already speak a language other than English, to study a language here at Dunlap. Research, and of course, our department's combined decades of teaching experience, has shown us that students who have learned a second language can more easily and more rapidly acquire a third through classroom study. This means that students who already speak a language other than English could become trilingual by taking a French or Spanish here at Dunlap. Of course, we're all aware of the benefits of proficiency in multiple languages in today's global society, but in addition, studying French and Spanish here at Dunlap also helps our students to develop greater cultural competency, which helps them become the responsible and culturally-aware citizens we strive for them to be. In addition, our department sees a fairly large number of heritage speakers of French and Spanish, that is, students who have learned their language at home with their family. Research shows that these students do generally underperform their English-speaking classmates in reading and writing, and therefore, they greatly benefit from classroom study in their heritage language despite their oral proficiency. Just as our English-speaking students benefit from their English classes here at school, these heritage-language students need additional focused instruction to become fluent readers and writers in their language. The department here at Dunlap always encourages our heritage speakers to take a course in their family's language, and they in turn not only improve their skills, but they become valuable members of their classroom community. Our department here at Dunlap High School is known for its rigor and our proficiency in helping students learn the content they need in order to place into higher-level courses at college, earn college credit, or to use language in their future careers. We have developed rich, on-level curriculum for our students seeking general proficiency in French or Spanish, as well as faster-paced, in-depth, pre-AP coursework, which is what we call our honors coursework, for students who are looking at the challenge of the French or Spanish exam in AP. These world language exams, by the way, are designed for students who have five to six years of honors-level language study. So maintaining the rigor of our pre-AP courses here at Dunlap is vital to our AP student's success because they may be learning skills in their previous classes leading up to the AP class that they're going to tackle on that AP exam. Oops, sorry. So ensuring that all students enrolled in these classes have fully met the prerequisites means that we can maintain the rigor and best serve all of our students. We are also constantly seeking improvements to our curriculum and our program. For example, we're in year four of a five-year plan to bring equality to our French and Spanish programs, and we just added two new courses to our catalog last year. In fact, we even have some new proposals we had planned to bring you in the next few months but which we've not yet had time to discuss at a board meeting. Our teachers, as I've previously mentioned, have decades of experience, and four of the seven of us are currently in master's programs in our subject areas. Believe me, we know how to look at our program with a critical eye and find ways to enrich our teaching and better the experience of our students. Please, let us do that. We are your experts, and we are here to bring our students the linguistic and cultural proficiency they need to succeed in our global society. I hope that you can trust us to do what we love and are highly qualified to do. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Señor, and I am representing the high school counseling department tonight. As a public high school, we need to keep in mind that the focus should be on what is in the best interest of our student body as a whole. Our counseling department at the high school consists of five professional school counselors and one clinical mental health -- and one clinical mental health counselor. We feel that we represent the collective voice for our students and serve as their advocate. Our main concern is their overall well-being. We are gravely concerned about the changes that have been proposed regarding current policy and how these changes may affect our students' mental health. Last school year, we saw a need for additional help to surface the amount of students seeking counseling services for stress, anxiety, and depression. So that our counseling department can continue to meet the academic needs of our students, the board approved the hiring of our wellness counselor, Jerry Genovese. Already this year, Ms. Genovese's schedule consists of seeing between twenty-seven and thirty-five students a week, while the other five counselors continue to address student mental health on a daily basis. Our students are already under such stress that even with the support of six full-time counselors, there have been six suicide assessments done, three threat assessments. We've had seven students hospitalized, and three are currently homebound, and this is all within the first seven weeks of the school year. We fear the proposed changes to the handbook will magnify the issues that we already see within our student body. We need to ensure that all policy changes are carefully considered and that the effects of these policies on our students are fully explored before implementing them. Students are already overstressed and overcommitted, taking on too much too soon, and their educational career can and will have adverse effects on their development. A multitude of studies have been done in recent years that indicate that a growing number of students are experiencing academic burnout before they even enter their post-secondary endeavors. Currently, during course selection, students are urged to talk to their current teachers, their parents, counselors, and other students who have taken the courses that they are interested in before making choices. In addition, counselors meet individually with each of their students to discuss their selections and to talk through any concerns that may arise. After courses are requested, our faculty is asked to review the request in order to make suggestions and recommendations. If they see a request that is what they believe is not in the best interest of the student, they pass along this to the counselor. This can be a recommendation for a more challenging course or a warning that a student might struggle in the selected class, based on that teacher's knowledge of the student and the course. The counselors then discuss these concerns with our students to help ensure that students are properly placed. Even with this process of checks and balances, the counseling office still fields a great number of requests for schedule and level changes within the first few weeks of the school year, as well as throughout the school year. If students are allowed to select courses that they are not ready for, we know that there will be an increased number of students who are stressed with the workload, who will feel like they can't keep up with the demands of the curriculum, and who will be jeopardizing their health and well-being to try to keep up. For some, their only choice may be to drop the class or request a level change. Depending on how deep we are into the semester and on class sizes, the counseling department may not be able to get them into another level or course, which could affect their credits towards graduation and college admissions. It could also affect their overall outlook about their abilities and their confidence in themselves moving forward. Dunlap High School is continuously evaluating what's best for our students, and changes to our handbook and curriculum guide are currently in the process of being written and submitted to the board for approval. Our teachers and other professionals within the building are using their knowledge and research to guide the changes that are being discussed. With that being said, we need to make sure that we are considering all angles before we move forward with these proposed policy changes. As adults, we have the responsibility of guiding our students, and sometimes, they need us to help them make decisions that are in their best interest. We are genuinely concerned that these policies may not be what's best for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dustin Hess. I'm here to represent the PE department. We are here in opposition for further exemptions in PE for now or in the future. Instead of just standing up here reading facts and research, we put together a packet of information on the benefits of PE. In there, you'll find information such as, you know, it improves cognition memory. We know students' test scores improve with PE, also shown to decrease when they're not getting their daily PE. Physical activity leads to increased attention span, concentration, increased self-esteem, which could then expect to improve classroom behavior as well as academic performance. Thank you, Coach Card. Our department feels as though we are trying to make strides in the high school. We've come up with more options for students. Just this year, we implemented different level weight classes, personal fitness, which includes yoga. We're working with nutrition. We're working with students to create their own workout plans. We've implemented a unified PE class, which, if you want to see something awesome, you go in there and you see that PE class going on with regular-ed kids, working with students with disabilities. We want to do more. We want to offer more, but we cannot do that if we are being devalued and students are slowly disappearing from our classes. We're also concerned with proposed changes in language being considered and worried that we're not going to be in compliance. Lot of language was missing from the proposed exemptions than what the state has mandated. Who's responsible if we're not in compliance? With all that being said, it really comes back to the young lady the other night when we were at the board meeting in the town center. Shared her story about how stressed she felt, the anxiety, the depression, the overload, et cetera. We know there's a lot more students just like her. We know this, now what can we do moving forward? Physical activity has been listed as one of the most beneficial strategies for coping with stress, anxiety, depression. We should actually be trying to find more opportunities for students to be active through the school day and have more choices for them. Based on the research, we should also be working with counselors on trying to get kids into PE classes the hour before their toughest subject. Lastly, I think we need to remember, we're not a college prep school. We are a public school, should be preparing students to become healthy, productive citizens, not just test takers.
Thank you.
For these reasons and more, we believe our students best benefit from daily physical education, and we will not support allowing students to miss out on these benefits. And if anything, we should be trying to find more opportunities for students to be active and allow them to decompress from the pressures they are often dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Barrington, teacher at Dunlap High School. Been here a while. Want to talk about Team Dunlap. I've got the easiest thing to talk about. We just came out of homecoming week. We've got a lot to be proud of here. What is Team Dunlap? If you've got to sit on a float at the parade or watch the parade, you saw an entire community come together, smiles, waving candy. Lot of candy. I got to see, as part of that parade, Brooks Battalion. And it gives us an opportunity to see how we care for our own, how we can keep her passion for education alive. I got to see and hear about a young man who, on Friday morning, was able to relate to his classmates, how the cheerleaders didn't forget him and his apartment building when they decorated and tee-pied everybody's house. I got to see grade-school students who, with their programs and their funding, every kid gets a scholastic book on book day. I got to see Mr. Dearman welcome out and walk on the track with a group of young people who were also in the parade with the biggest smiles, I think, of anybody in the parade with that project impact, that were able to provide money for people who really needed And then our ex-students, Johnny Gontos and Grant Murphy and Emily Re, coming back to collect money for the children's hospital as a fifty-fifty. Why are we here? Board, teachers, custodians, cooks, family members, parents. We're here because we love kids. And as part of homecoming, I got to see my twenty-eighth tug-of-war. Seniors won. Seniors always win. Not saying they cheat, but they always win. But when you watch a tug-of-war, one side doesn't just dominate a good tug-of-war. You work together, you're on equal footing. Got the same shoes, you've got to have the same weight on either side, you've got a strong rope in between. I think that's one of the things that we really have to be thinking about when we make curriculum changes, if we make changes to where we put a banner. We need to make sure that everybody's on equal footing. And if we have equal footing, we can go into a battle, we can go into a fight, and we can respect the result that comes out. And I think that that's what you're here for, and that's what we're here for. We don't expect everything to go our way. That's not what we are. This is our second home. We belong here. Something that shows up four or five times, it's in every classroom here at the high school. I hope it's in every classroom in the district, but it might just be a high school thing. But this is our second home. We belong here. We're blessed. We're blessed to get to see the smile on the girl's face who is still grieving a loss in the family while she was at the homecoming dance, stayed until ten o'clock. I hadn't seen this girl smile for a couple of weeks. Blessed to get to see those ex-students that come back to brag about their kids, to brag about how they're doing in their college classes because of what Mr. Baker or Mrs. Ida Apollo or any of our AP teachers did for them when they were in our classrooms. I'm blessed to see how far we have come, and yet, we're still committed to our roots here. We still have programs that were here when I started. We still have clubs. We still have a lot of opportunities that were still there. Our curriculum's the best south of I-80. Prove me wrong on that one. And we're as good as any curriculum in Chicago. We need to embrace who we are. Please embrace who we are, because we are Team Dunlap. This is our second home, and doggone it, we belong here.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Hohenberry. I'm a seventh-grade math teacher at Dunlap Valley. I also have two children who go to school in this district. I felt compelled to speak tonight, as one of the proposed handbook changes directly affects me and, more importantly, my students. This is now my twenty-third year of teaching middle school math, thirteen of them here in Dunlap, so I feel like I know a little bit about adolescent children. The changes that are being suggested for middle school math would be a detriment to the majority of our students. While teaching in Dunlap, I have been a part of two different criteria systems that have been used to identify students who qualify for advanced math in seventh grade and algebra in eighth grade. As middle school teachers, math and ELA, we saw a need to revamp the criteria again. So this past school year, I was a part of the enrichment committee, where a whole lot of time and great discussions took place to form a recommendation that we felt good about, which now you want to completely disregard. As a middle school math teacher, often the biggest challenge I see my students face every year is their lack of confidence in their math skills. They come to me, and at middle school, and many of them have decided they are not good at math. And so, a lot of times, that is my mission, is to prove them wrong. By pushing students to take courses that they are not ready for, this is only going to hinder their confidence, which is going to affect their learning. I have seen firsthand students who have been enrolled in advanced math classes who just aren't quite ready for it. They have great math skills, they're just not ready for that level. It turns a very high-achieving student into a student who doubts themselves and lowers their self-esteem. Why would we not want to have students get the strong mathematical foundation they need instead of pushing them into a class they're not ready for? Students need to be placed in a class that is appropriate for the student. It should not be a status symbol for their parents. It is daily... It is daily that I see students who are struggling and frustrated with math. It's also daily that I see students who, all of a sudden, the light turns on, they begin to shine, and they begin to believe in themselves. Everything that I and the other teachers see on a daily basis was taken into account when we served on the enrichment committee and made our recommendation this past school year. Can any of you say the same?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Winter. I teach seventh grade ELA at Dunlap Valley Middle School. I am speaking today on behalf of the ELA Department of both middle schools. I am concerned about the possibility of an open enrollment policy for our middle school Power Literature courses. As a member of the Middle School Enrichment Qualification Committee, I am familiar with best practices and a number of enrichment models currently in place throughout the country. And overwhelmingly, these advanced placement courses are provided as a means of challenging gifted and/or high-achieving, ambitious students with a faster-paced and/or more rigorous curriculum. In fact, the current Power Literature curriculum used by both middle schools here in Dunlap was created by the College of William &amp; Mary for gifted education. Each book begins with a letter to parents, which states that the curriculum, quote, "was designed for use with high-ability students." Based on what I have observed in the past and what some teachers are observing right now, a number of students who have qualified for this class per the pre-qualification process are struggling to keep up with the demands of pace and rigor. The amount of work to be completed outside of the classroom, combined with self-monitoring and pacing, are skills that this curriculum requires. These are also skills that not all students possess. It was proposed that a teacher recommendation addressing these skills be required prior to students' admission to this course, and was, in fact, implemented. Without this component, Power Lit admission will be based solely on parent discretion, parents who are unfamiliar with the specifics of the curriculum and its requirements. Therefore, placing students in this course based on parent request is not setting all students up for success. So, as you can see, this is not a curriculum or course that is meant for all students. Moreover, students who are enrolled in Power Literature are expected to have a wealth of background knowledge beyond basic reading and writing skills. With zero diagnostic testing to determine if a student is ready for this type of curriculum, one of two things must happen. Either those students who do not have the necessary basic skills to succeed in this class will fail, or all of the students who are prepared for this coursework will be held back as teachers are forced to review basic concepts that are not normally required of this class, thus rendering it a traditional ELA class with a fancier name. Obviously, it is not a best practice to place students into a class that does not meet their educational needs, and it would be a detriment to all students in the class if open enrollment were to become policy. We have such a large focus on academic successes, but what about our students' social and emotional well-being? By allowing any student to enroll in this class, you are setting some students up for unnecessary anxiety created by a curriculum that was not built for them. A recent article featured in Psychology Today notes the rise in childhood anxiety, citing twenty-five percent of children between the ages of thirteen and eighteen have mild to moderate anxiety. These are statistics that Dunlap is not immune to, and our classrooms continue to see a growing number of students who struggle with anxiety and depression. What are the underlying reasons for this trend? According to the same Psychology Today article, parental and societal pressures as well as full schedules and perceived poor academic performance are among the factors contributing to this climb in anxiety diagnoses, all of which would increase if we allow open enrollment for advanced placement classes such as Power Lit. Why do we, as a district, need to further subject our children to undue stress by pressuring them to take classes that are not in their best interest? Like you, I want to see the students of Dunlap thrive, both academically and socially. And I've seen firsthand the powerful impact our current ELA curriculums and advanced enrollment procedures have on our students. Please allow our district's educators to facilitate student achievement by providing appropriate curriculum expectations and rigor to all students. Thank you.
My name's Amanda Tomlin, and I'm a parent in this district.
My name's Amanda Tomlin, and I'm a parent in this district. First, I would like to thank all of you so much for putting together a meeting on a Monday night after a busy homecoming weekend. We really appreciate that. Your timing is always perfect with this current board. As a parent, I am just wondering why educational decisions are being made without input from the educators? You surely wouldn't make medical decisions about your children without consulting physicians, or would you? So you shouldn't make educational decisions without consulting the teachers, the counselors, and all the administration sitting in this building. Our expectations of you as a board is to do what is best for our children, and when you do not allow the educators to have a voice in the decisions that you make, you are not meeting our expectations, all of you. It is not the board's place to just dream up policies and to put them in place. If you, the board, feel there is something you want to explore, then ask your superintendent to look at it. And let me remind all of you, the superintendent is the expert, and he will make a recommendation. The board is currently circumventing the process and making decisions based on your own personal views and opinions. This is a huge overreach and seriously irresponsible. There is a complete lack of leadership on this board, and you, Dr. Dearman, should not allow for this. Thank you.
Chris Friedman, English teacher at the high school for, this is my 24th year, also a parent of an alum. And I'm obviously going to be talking about the curriculum changes. When I was a young teacher, so 23 and 1/2 years ago, and I first started here, and it was a wonderful place to be when I started, because they gave me a whole lot of freedom. They kind of said, "Well, here's, you're teaching freshmen, here you go." And I mentioned one day to Linda Wood, who was sort of the leader of our English department. I said, "This Greek play, I'm not sure that I really want to teach it at the freshman level. I know it's in the textbook, but I think I'm not going to do it." She pulled me aside, and she said, "No, no, no, no. You do that so that the sophomore teacher can build on what you're talking about there, so that when they get to Barb at their junior level, she can reference it, and then as a senior, I can reference it when I start talking about those other Greek plays." And I learned very, very quickly that things are done for a reason, that things are taught at the freshman level for a reason that affects not just the freshman teacher. It affects the sophomore teacher, and the junior teacher, and the senior teacher, and so on. Fast forward to last week. I am talking to my AP class, and I'm talking about things that you need to be able to do and skills you need to be able to have to be successful on the test, and I was talking about just general vocabulary and vocabulary lists and so on. And one of my students raised his hand, and he said, "You're talking about vocabulary and all those vocab lists, and Mrs. England gives all those vocab lists to us when we're sophomores. Is this some sort of coordinated attack by you guys?" And I said, "Well, attack's probably the wrong word, but coordinated absolutely is. We still do an excellent job of that here in all classes," but I can only speak for the English department, since that's where I work. But I'm also not naive enough to believe that we're perfect. I was fortunate enough a couple of years ago to coach a girls' cross-country team that happened to have won the state meet, and they were pretty good. After that happened, I spent the next six months reading, talking to other coaches, talking to my own runners about what could we do different? How could we improve this even more? And we were the best team in the state. We were one of the best teams in the Midwest, but you could always do a little bit better. So I went to those people who I thought could give me the best advice, my assistant coaches, coaches that I respected from other schools around the state, and started reading books from coaches across the country and across the world. I had to do a lot of work for six months trying to figure out, am I doing this right, and what can I do to improve? I offer you this opportunity. You've got a whole lot of experts in this room. You don't have to go anywhere. Come talk to us. We know why we do what we do here. We know, yeah, we can have a discussion about maybe the way things could change, but to be told, here's what's going to change without any discussion, feels a little bit like an insult, and I don't want that. This place is too special to me to have that be the way it goes, and we've had those times here where there has been a disconnect. This is an opportunity to create that connection, and many of you campaigned on that, and I hope that you remember that and consider that.
If there's not anyone else who wishes to address the board at this time, this concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you to all who spoke. The board will now move on to the information discussion items. The purpose of this meeting today is to gather a little bit more information and understanding based on the recommendations that were put forward. Specifically, we have two board members who have looked at the documents and the inconsistencies that were in the handbook versus the curriculum guide versus policy. So the first item that we'd like to discuss amongst the board has to do with the information regarding the revisions to the PE exemptions, which were included in the packet. I think at this point, we're going to open this up to discussion amongst the board, and I think, Mrs. Disharun, you are prepared to...
Abby, could I make a comment before we get started?
Sure.
Will that be okay? First of all, I would like to thank everyone who spoke today, as well as everyone attending this meeting. The expectation of both our board leaders and members is to ensure the board follows all policies and procedures. I firmly do not believe this is happening for the items on the agenda this evening. It's extremely disappointing to me. I believe Melissa stated every board policy out there that had something in it. Thank you for that. Board Policy 640 does indicate the school board is responsible for curriculum adoption, must approve all significant changes, the superintendent, Dr. Dearman, or a designated is responsible for making curriculum recommendations. At the February 20, 2019 regular board meeting, we approved both handbooks and the approval of the middle school enrichment qualification process. The proposed discussion for tonight's meeting is based on these items. We, as a board, received the first draft of the proposed changes on the afternoon of Monday, September 23rd, which was exactly two weeks ago from today, indicating this was the beginning of a process that Karen and Ann reviewed, which was to be discussed during the September 25th regular board meeting. Cheryl Bluth at the time raised concerns during that meeting due to the lack of involvement by administration and staff, and suggested a committee of the whole approach. This led to where we are today. At this point, I have not been informed of any involvement by the administration or educational staff, both of which are essential to success. They are our experts. It's everyone out there, everyone out in the audience that did speak today. This is not the leadership our district expects and deserves. We, as board members, work through our processes, procedures for a reason. It ensures we are doing our jobs for the district and not for ourselves. Being here is without value and is disturbing to our administrators, teachers, our community, fellow board members, and me, myself. And I think that's evidenced by all of the folks in the audience today. My strong recommendation is for us to follow the process. We have to stop working in silos and do the work for the district we were elected to do. That being said, I would request these items be tabled at this time until the appropriate committee be formed, and the proposed changes reviewed, researched, and recommended by a committee. Are there any... Are there any board members at this table who are in agreement with that?
Absolutely. And I raised a concern before the last board meeting, raised it at the board meeting, asked to do committee of the whole, hoping that, and I also raised a concern, that we need to engage the administration, staff, and the past practices and policies that have been in place that make a working document, curriculum, all these different things on here. And I expected that that would have happened. I know that, you know, there is a push to try to do this before registration, but I think we've got to do it the right way. And we can't not only step on the toes of the people who are, you know, fulfilling our mission to make our, you know, kids reach their individual potential, but we're stepping in their shoes and doing a job that honestly, I appreciate Karen and Ann, I do want to say. I appreciate you had to have done hours and hours of work going through the middle school handbooks, the high school handbook, the curriculum guide, you know, the new state laws, and comparing with the board policies. A long time ago, when I practiced law, I used to do that, employment law, and so it takes a long time. But what takes the most time is collaboration with organizations and schools and entities that you're trying to develop handbooks and policies for. And we just, we miss that, and, you know, I don't want us to lose the confidence and trust of, these are the people that are making our kids so successful, and to bypass that, I think we're taking a step way back. So I agree and would like to table this and do it the right way. I mean, I understand there's a push just for this registration, but we have to do it the right way, and we're not doing that. So 110 pages of edits by board members, I don't think is appropriate.
You know, I'd just like to make some comments on the process. I have participated in the handbook committee for three years. When I first got on the handbook committee, I had no idea the importance of the handbook committee. I did not realize that that's where policies are really developed. What happens in that handbook committee, nine times out of 10, ends up being what's approved. And I don't think the people who participate from the community realize that that's really what we're doing in those handbook committee meetings. It was kind of presented to me that, and for those of new members who don't know how this works, it's an administrator from each building, it's a board member, it's a couple parents, it's staff, usually there's a student, at least one, usually a few more. And we meet, and the new changes are usually redlined or highlighted, and you go over those. There's, to my, in my experience, not been a real review of curriculum and instruction and access issues, and many of the concerns that Ann and I have been hearing about. So it's just changes in state law, changes that the board makes in board policy. So, you know, if we made a change at any time, then that would be reflected. And sometimes it's also changes that administrators want to make, or staff, you know, where they see a problem. So I feel like the process, while it's good to get a committee together and work on it, I don't think it's worked as well for our students as it should. I think there's some problems.
Excuse me. Listen, we all had an opportunity to speak. No one on the board laughed or responded when people were at the podium, and I would ask the same respect to the individual board members. I know you don't like surprises. We don't like surprises, but I think if we, everybody gets the opportunity to speak, we're all going to have a lot better understanding for the rationale of why you and Ann felt this was important. I think we need to give everybody the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So anyway, just some background on why Ann and I sort of came out with these suggestions. Ann, we did say, we hope this is an opening discussion point for these changes. You know, I don't have all the answers, but we have heard over the years, and experienced sometimes ourselves, barriers to access. Ann heard it repeatedly on the Camprain Trail just last year. People are frustrated when their children are denied access to classes that they want and they feel that are best for their children and their goals. And in some cases, it seems like we just allow an elite few to take a lot of those classes and have access to some of those classes. We had some recent constituent cases that were revealed to us, just a bureaucratic process that makes it more difficult for students to achieve their goals. We had a case where a student wanted to take, receive dual credit, or receive credit, high school credit, for a trades class at ICC. And it took about four months with Ann and I, and administrators, and staff working on that, and the parent was extremely frustrated, and it was frustrating for all of us, and that shouldn't happen. Ann and I have college-aged children for the first time, and we learned a great deal from those experiences and that of their friends. The process for reviewing the new changes in state law and board action doesn't always work as well as I think it should. The handbooks and the issues involved are voluminous, so only new language is discussed. Rarely do we look at the practice and say, "Hmm, maybe what we've been doing for the past 10 years needs to be changed. Maybe we can do it better." As I said, the parents who are on the committee don't often have an idea in these meetings what is being done. I've watched some parents participate and express concerns or suggestions, and often those suggestions are ignored or dismissed. And most often, the initial changes made by the administration are those adopted. Most of the changes we're reviewing today are to help our children be more successful and more competitive after high school and college and careers. While we always tend to look at the schools in our conference, when we're looking at practices often, and especially athletics, our children's competition getting into college and in college academically is not Morton, Washington, and Metamora. It's the suburbs. Most of the kids in Illinois who go to school face the competition from the Chicago suburbs. My son, Jack, all the kids are from the Atlanta suburbs. So they have those challenges, and those are, that's their competition. So, you know, I would suggest that some of these changes that we're proposing today are to help our students when they're in college. You know, I know there's some issues of, you know, passing the AP tests and getting good scores on that, but there are also issues of having access to classes so that you're better prepared in school. And so those are some of the issues that we'd like to get at, and also allowing our children to have, you know, the freedom to have more open schedules their junior and senior year, not just from the PE exemption, but also by allowing them to take required courses earlier in their high school career, so that they can be in a position to do a co-op. You know, we don't have many kids doing co-ops now. It takes a half-day usually of time, and we don't have as many kids taking dual-credit classes as they could. And those would all be advantageous to students in reducing the cost of college, getting into a college, getting scholarships for college, being more competitive at college. And so those are some of the issues that we would like to explore. And I think there's some data to support some of this. On the Illinois School Report Card, Dunlap School District is below the state average on students passing 8th grade algebra. We've been there for five years, and it's not like our students and our teachers can't handle it. We're higher than the average in every other academic measure except passing 8th grade algebra. And the problem with that is that then students are not on track to take calculus, and calculus is a critically important class in college for success in STEM and business careers. We're also below the state average and lower than neighboring high school Richwoods and many Chicago-area suburban schools in the number of students taking pre-college coursework, and this is also unacceptable. We've also had an instance where an administrator put language in the handbook that had nothing to do with a change in state law or board policy, and that was not fully vetted with the staff. It was passed, and then we had to take action afterwards to correct it. So again, just an example of the process not always working. We had a student with a perfect on her ACT and a 4.0 GPA, whose dream is to go to a top-tier university. She requested to take a course that's only offered for seniors, but she wanted to take it her junior year, but the curriculum guide said she could only take it her senior year. She was denied access to the class, even though the class was so small that it was close to being canceled, and that doesn't make sense. I guess the saddest story for me, and I know this happens in other instances too, is that I heard about a student at a college in Iowa, and he's majoring in engineering, and he's a good student. And he's a good student, but he wasn't as serious at a younger age as maybe other students. And he didn't get into the honors track. His parent is an engineer. He always wanted to be an engineer. He felt like he was good at math, but you know, he maybe just wasn't as serious a student. And now he's at, it's either Iowa or Iowa State, and he's struggling in the calculus class because he didn't have calculus. He wasn't on that track. And so now he's reconsidering whether or not he should be an engineer. And I think there are probably a lot of instances of that where, because they haven't had that opportunity to take calculus in high school, they're at a disadvantage when they go to college. There are countless stories like this, and I know, I'm sure others have heard these, but I also just want to address the issue of the board having the overview on approving curriculum. So yeah, I have the powers and duties of the board as well. Number nine clearly states approving the curriculum, textbooks, and educational services. Number 11, presenting the district report card and school report card to parents, guardians, and the community. And then number 19, communicating the school's activities and operations to the community and representing the needs and desires of the community in educational matters. And I guess that's what we're trying to do here today, is that, you know, there are many students who are having issues of access, who need more flexibility in their schedule, and we would like those to be addressed as soon as they can, whichever ones can be. So, thank you.
And I just wanted to follow up too. To be clear, I'm not talking about the merits of the things that you brought up, and I really liked what Chris Friedman said. I mean, there's always room for improvement. And as a board, as a board member, I'm all about that if it's in the best interest of the student. But we have to do it in partnership with our administrators and our staff and their expertise. So I understand. That's all. So, and well, and to go back, I mean, we didn't engage with them, and you guys, like I said, you guys spend a lot of time on this. And, you know, there were edits that I thought, oh, yeah, that makes sense. That's a little clearer to read grammatically or whatever. Great, but that's not our job. But to now, it's, you did it, and it's awesome, but to engage with them with their expertise. We sat here for an hour with public participation with probably 99%, you know, of our educators that educate our kids, that really, I mean, it's amazing, all the information they provided us, but they shouldn't have to do that in public participation. They should be at the table.
Thank you, Cheryl, and that's why we had this meeting tonight.
Right, so back to what Teresa was saying, is I think we probably need to table making decisions tonight.
And we're going to move forward, but, and we know how you feel. Many of us feel the same way. There's a process to do this, but I think if we can get through what it is that these people have worked on, then we can come up with a plan of how we're going to go about doing this. And I appreciate what you're saying. I know the staff appreciates what you're saying as well as Teresa, what you said. But I think if we can move through the information that they wanted to present, which is why we had this meeting, then we can figure out a game plan of how we're going to, or if we're going to get any of these things accomplished.
So I just want to understand why the administration wasn't engaged. That's my question. I just, I want to understand why they were not.
Well, first of all, we did engage Dr. Dearman as far as the math issue. I mean, we had a conversation with that pre-aboard meeting conference. And so these other issues were brought to the forefront, and they were brought up at the last meeting to be discussed. And when it was discussed, we had people that were concerned and spoke, and so that's why we had this committee and the whole meeting. And that's what we're doing now, is we're going to let them continue to talk about the things that they've researched, and then we'll come up with a game plan to see where we're going to go from here. All right, we did discuss the PE. Are you finished with the PE exemption?
We've not talked about PE.
Okay, well, get on it then. Let's get it done.
Okay. So I guess part of the issue to Teresa and Cheryl is that sometimes our policy says one thing and our curriculum book says another, and our handbook says another. And so part of it is making that consistent. So our policy actually allows for exemptions in PE for juniors and seniors who are taking an academic class for high school graduation or for college, but our handbook seems to allow the exemption for college admission requirements. But at least two students that I know of have requested this and not received it. So I feel like maybe we need to clarify and make the language a little clearer. The other exemption for high school requirements is written in such a way that it's not clear, and it also makes it really difficult to satisfy. So I would recommend that it be, you know, easier to satisfy and that the language be easier. To give some background, Illinois is one of six states to mandate time requirements for high school PE. A couple of years ago, the Illinois state law changed, but prior to that, Illinois was the only state in the nation requiring daily PE. The new Illinois allows more exemptions and decreases the time requirement for PE to three days. We do five days, but the state law only requires three days. So we already are going beyond the state requirements and also national norms in terms of PE. Other schools are taking advantage of this exemption. Richwoods does not, as a standard practice, have juniors and seniors sign up for PE, nor do other schools in the Chicago suburbs. And so they state in their curriculum guide that only two credits of PE are required. They give a half credit for each semester, whereas we only give a quarter credit, but most schools, I think, give a half credit. So it's just two years of PE for Richwoods. But it's not required, what's required in law or allowed in law. It's what's best for our students. And I believe that changing our practice to allow PE exemptions for juniors and seniors is in the best interest of our students. It'd be very valuable for the student like Megan, who's the high achiever, who has a tough course load. It's good for the one-sport athlete who's training all year long but only gets an exemption for one semester. It'd be great for a student who wants to participate in a co-op or take dual-credit classes to have more time. They need a full half-day often to participate in the co-op. Junior and senior year is just a crazy time for lots of kids. They have extracurricular activities, college applications, college scholarship applications, research on colleges, visits, entrance exams, ACT, SAT, studying for those, work, volunteer work, service to their community, you know, many, many activities. This is a time when it's really hard to get everything in. And it's harder coursework too. It's not Spanish 1 and 2, it's Spanish 3 and 4, and on down the line. I agree that physical exercise is an important stress reducer. You know, I'm pro-exercise myself, and I try to instill that in my children. I totally believe in it. However, Illinois ranks in the second worst category for obesity rates, yet we have been in the top five for mandated PE. I'm not sure there's a direct relationship in that that's working. Mandating students to take PE in junior and senior year is probably not going to make or break whether students develop physical exercise for a lifetime. If you ask students, and I'm sure most of us would agree, you get out of PE what you put into it. If you put forth a good effort, the PE time is going to be of value. And by the way, this proposal doesn't say, and if kids want to take PE their junior and senior year, they still can. It's just an option to not take it if they're taking these courses. So I believe mandating students to take PE when it's not their choice is probably not going to change that many students' attitudes or health, and it's not going to make them have a good workout or good stress reducer from their PE. You know, when adults are really busy, when I'm slammed someday with work or volunteer work or family stuff, I will sometimes slack off on my exercise. You know, it's not the right thing to do. It's not best for me, but that's what I do when I'm really, really, really busy some days. And so we do that as adults, but yet in this instance, we're not wanting to allow it for our students. I just think that we need to let parents and students together have the latitude to decide during these very busy junior and senior years what's best for them. They, many of them have dreams to get into colleges, to have certain careers, and they often have really busy schedules to try to meet those goals. And I think we should embrace those and give them the opportunity and the freedom to reach those.
I just wanted to add one thing about the PE. One of the teachers said that we weren't following the law because it wasn't, she made the comment that it wasn't required just for college, that that's the only way you could go. It does say in the law that students can miss if they have to take a class for graduation from high school. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this is within the law.
Thank you. Any other comments on the PE information that was presented by Mrs. Disharoon? All right, let's move on to the next item of information. Information regarding proposed revisions to the middle school and high school handbook is included in the board packet. Mr. Andrews is here to give a presentation to the board. That's what I have on my paper here. Is that true?
I didn't see it on the agenda.
I didn't see it on the agenda either, but it's on my... Are you here to give...
It's information to review the policy that we put back, that we had presented back in January. If you wanted me to go through that for any board members, make something be sure.
I believe at this point on our agenda, we had information for the student handbook revisions of middle school and high school based on what Mrs. Henry had found as far as consistencies and inconsistencies.
So I wanted to talk about what I found were inconsistencies amongst the handbook and the curriculum guide, and in some instances, the law. And when I looked at all these, which had started with the handbook, there came to be one overriding factor, and that was having access to classes. And I know a lot of the teachers have said that they know best, but there's another side that, I feel like we have two different groups talking, but they're not talking to each other. So many parents are frustrated. This is what I heard when I was campaigning. I knocked on about 1,000 doors, and that's what I heard the most, was they want more access. And they were speaking for themselves and also for their students. And what they were, what they most were asking for, the things they mentioned were that they, they wanted their high school students to have more access to early college credit classes such as AP and dual credit. I haven't heard many people talk about the dual credit from ICC. And they wanted to have more availability for classes in the high school that were not dual credit. And they also asked for more co-op and technical trade offerings at the high school. The other thing that they mentioned was middle school frustration with not allowing their students to be taking some of the honors classes. So when I'm looking at almost all these changes, they were really about access. And I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about early college courses. And I know you people are the experts. There's always different views of situations. And for ICC and for dual credit, this can be very helpful for their cost of going to college. So one of the reasons parents are asking for these classes and students, oops, is, one is for increased rigor, to help beef up their resume to go to college, to have more rigor, to be prepared for their applications, and a big part of it is money. And statewide and nationwide, high schools...
You might want to speak up.
Oh, can you hear me?
No.
Hello?
I can hear you.
Can you pull the mic closer to you? There you go.
Yeah, just speak louder.
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. I feel like I'm yelling. Okay. I have to yell, okay. So a lot of the reason that parents want, I hope you've heard part of this, is that the reason they want these classes is for increased rigor, to prepare for college, to help with their college applications, and also because of the cost of college. So I wanted to provide you with some statistics about the cost of college. And I know that some of you have had students in college, but I found out some interesting information. The college board says the average price of a four-year public university per year with tuition, room, and board is $21,000. I found that to be low. University of Illinois, it's $31,000. Without scholarships, students will pay approximately $100,000 for their college diploma. And students are underwater with student debt. The statistics are sobering, and I wonder if, some of this came from Forbes article, that student debt loans are now the second-highest consumer debt in the nation, only behind mortgage debt. So student debt is more than credit card debts, and it's more than auto loans. Across the US, there are more than 44 million borrowers who collectively have 1.5 trillion in student debt loans. The average student loan debt in 2016, according to Forbes, was $37,000. So this is part of the reason that parents and students want this. It's cost. So what makes it good is that the ICC dual-credit courses are an incredible value. $50 for a three-hour class. I mean, you just can't beat that. The AP classes to take the exam is $90. So students at other schools, and I know we have a wonderful school, but we also are looking at what other schools are doing statewide. Richwoods, more students there are taking early college classes. Their average is 53%. Dunlap's is 34%, and we're lower than the state average, which is 37%. Schools in the Chicago suburbs, many of them have, 50% of their students are taking early college classes. So, I mean, I understand that you all know best, but I want you to understand too that we're looking at cost and practicality of the cost of further education. So what also we've heard is that where it seems to be most obvious is not in the senior year, but access for sophomores and freshmen to early college credit. For example, at Richwoods, and these run also with Chicago, so it's not just Richwoods, that 33% of sophomores and 63% of juniors take early college credit at Richwoods, while with us at Dunlap, it's 14% of sophomores and 24% of juniors. And suppose the question is why? Why does this happen? One thing I've seen by looking at others is that they are allowing these underclassmen to take more. For example, AP Psych does not have prerequisites, but it's not available until the senior year. AP History is not allowed for underclassmen, but for juniors and seniors, even though there And it's not just us or the other schools. It's also what's been going on by the state. They're encouraging this. In 2010, the state put forth the Dual-Credit Quality Act. And the reason they did this was number one, to reduce college costs. Number two was to speed the time to college completion. And the third reason was to improve the curriculum for high school students to align with college and workplace expectations. And this is from the act, it's not me making up my own opinion. So what this said is that a qualified student shall be allowed to enroll, this is what was added in 2019, should be, is allowed to enroll in an unlimited amount of dual-credit courses and earn an unlimited amount of academic credits from dual credit, as long as they are taught by an Illinois instructor under the Dual-Credit Quality Act. So these are some of the things we're finding in the state. These... These can save students. I talked to a teacher on an airplane, and her, her kids go to El Paso, Illinois, and they're coming out of high school with a year's worth of college courses. So they're saving 25% of the cost of college. When you look at Dunlap, the biggest feeders are ICC, University of Illinois, and ISU. So these dual credit courses, and when you're talking about dual credit, from the Dual Credit Quality Act, it's for ICC classes, for junior college classes. All these at ICC, I mean, we offer some here, but there's more also at the, at ICC. These college that are gen ed classes will transfer to any public university in the state, and to also many private ones, including Bradley, and the nursing programs like OSF and Methodist, which many of our students go to. So, another thing that was in our handbook, and this is where I'm trying to show the difference between our practices and what necessarily is done. In our handbook, they talk about sequencing. And that means that a student can take a class out of order, and it's not recommended, but they said that it can be done. So, but the way this does not happen, and I've had many students bring this up, and parents, that Dunlap will say, "Well, you can take it out of sequence, but the prerequisite is you can't do it if you're a junior," even if there's no prerequisite. So it's being kind of sidestepped by what level they are in school. For example, civics and resource management and US history, these are all required for graduation. They have no prerequisites, but students have to wait. Another is English, where, from what I understand, your freshman and sophomore years of English are mandated with these classes that are the entry level, the middle level, or the honors. It doesn't say that in the handbook that they're required, but that's my assumption. And, but some students want to get ahead, they want to take other classes, but the only one they can take is speech two. There's no others. But as a junior or a senior, there are 13 offerings for English. I wanted to give an example to compare this to sports, because I know we have a lot of people here that enjoy sports. So if you have a freshman who's a great basketball player, they will immediately be moved up to varsity. They can be in the starting five, they can earn the most points. But if you have a freshman who's quite intelligent, 33 ACT on the robotics team and Scholastic poll, they aren't allowed to move up. So if they want to take a class that's a junior level with no prereqs, the answer is no. You don't play up, you wait. And so especially for sophomores, there are times that by the time their second semester, there are no prereqs left that they can take.
Required courses?
Required courses, I'm sorry. There are no required courses that they can take, because they have to wait till their junior or senior year. And then by the time they're juniors or seniors, there's all these classes they can take, but there's no way they can take them, because they don't have enough time, they can't fit them in. What I am asking, representing parents, is, I mean, as the board here, we're looking at our voters, our citizens, is that, wouldn't it be okay to, when there's empty seats and there's no prerequisites, why not fill those seats? I mean, what's the reason not to when there's no prereqs? There's some other things I noticed in the handbook that when Karen and I were going through them. Another example is co-ops. According to state law, students can do co-ops starting in ninth grade. However, according to our handbook, they wait till senior year. And I believe that students who want to go into the trades or technical education should be allowed to do this before their senior year. By the time you're a senior, you need to have a pretty good idea of what you want to do in the future. So being able to do that your sophomore or even your junior year is, is a good thing, I would think. As Karen mentioned, there was this, this issue with the student who wanted to take a welding class. According to our handbook, they, normally it's approved if it's not offered in the school. But it took several months, emails, phone calls, I mean, it just went on and on, two board members having to meet, and finally, this was approved. So when we were talking, we were asking about, what about opening access to classes with no prereqs? This would allow our sophomores to have more to do, to prepare for college, to take more classes, and, and fill seats that are now open. So one thing I would like to ask is to consider that. If, if, I mean, it seems like, for the most part, juniors and seniors can take almost any class, actually, sometimes not even juniors, sometimes seniors, again, with no necessary prereqs, except they're a senior, is to allow sophomores, or to consider this, to allow them to be involved in these classes where there's no prereqs, especially when they're required for graduation, such as civics, US history, family, resource management. So, the one other issue I want to bring up is that, as a board, we're here because the voters put us here. And we are supposed to answer not only to the school, but to our citizens, our taxpayers, and these are some of the things that they want. So, there's always a bridge, but these are the things that we're hearing. So I would just hope that we could make progress and work together.
I'd just add, on the, on the issue of allowing sophomores to take more classes, we have a really good problem with the summer school program, right? It's been so successful. Many children have been taking courses in summer school. And what that does, though, is they get those required courses out of the way, freshman and sophomore year, and then, or sophomore, summer before sophomore year. Some of them don't have enough classes to really sign up for, except electives. And so if their goal is to get through their high school requirements and try to be taking these dual credit and, and AP classes in junior and senior year, it, it's just a waste of time that they can't, when they have open in their schedule for sophomore year, they could, they have time to take the resource management, the civics, and the US history, but they're not allowed to. And, and it's because our summer school program has been so successful that we have this situation, but we've not done anything to change that and to accommodate the fact that this is happening. And I really think we should address it.
There's one more thing I wanted to bring up. I know several of the teachers discuss not pushing students, they're in over their head to some extent. What I heard when knocking on doors is there are students who are bored, there are students who want to get in, and they're being told, "No, you're, you're not smart enough." And so there's always this issue of what's the right balance. And students and parents need to have a say as well. Sometimes they feel like they're not on a team, that they're being told what to do, and, and they don't have a choice. And I know the teachers know the students, but, you know, parents know about these kids who've got fire in the belly, and they're going to get it, and they're going to do it, and they're going to make it. And it's not stress. For them, it's a challenge, it's exciting. And so I, I'm just asking you to consider that. You know, one thing I was told is when you put students at a higher level, they'll rise with the tide. So to tell students, "You're smart, you can do this," and they will rise with the tide, some will. And so that's a balance we have to work on here, is the students that feel that they're being told, "You can't do this, you're, you're not smart enough." I heard this more in the middle school than any other place, and freshmen too. They, they've gone through middle school, they've been told, "You can go to high school, you can finally take those classes you want." But then as freshmen, they're being told, "No, you need to do what we say." So when do the students get to make more decisions? You've got to realize, by the time they're juniors and seniors, they're on the brink of adulthood, and they need to have a say.
I'd like to say something. I will say that teachers, I feel, know their, the students very well. I mean, they spend far more time with them, especially in the grade school level. One individual teacher spends, spends more time with that student probably than their parents do. Teachers are professionals, there are tests and, and assessments and, and teacher opinion, those are all things that really we need to utilize to make a good decision. But I also know there are instances, and those teachers who are parents as well, know that sometimes you do know your child, their, their behavior, their temperament, their sensitivities, perhaps better than a teacher would. Which brings the point that we need to be working together and collaboratively to make such decisions. We've brought a lot of information to the board and to the community and the teachers in a short amount of time. And I think individually, I've probably said to you both that this is a lot to take on, and it's a lot of work. And there are some things I, I agree, we, we probably could improve upon. And in my opinion, if my great niece and nephew at Richwoods can graduate and get an associate's degree, if that's what they want, at Richwoods, we should be able to offer the same opportunity here at Dunlap. We want, wouldn't want to give other children a better opportunity than, than we can provide here. Not every student is going to go to college. Not every student wants to go to college or, or will succeed in college. However, we can provide opportunities in, in the trades, co-ops. I think we've started a good conversation about this, but we also need to look at the process and how we do this collaboratively. I'd like to propose that sometime within the next week, Dr. Dearman, Mrs. Disharoon, Mrs. Henry sit down together, see if we can pick some times where we can meet on these individual issues. I know, Dr. Dearman, you have your ideas about the math issue at the middle school level. I think there are things that we can do to meet in the middle, possibly not get everything accomplished within the next month or two. But I would like to request that the two of you sit down with Dr. Dearman, and he can also invite the people who would be involved, perhaps the union member, high school principal, so that we can get a dialogue going, to come back with some suggestions so that we can start this process. I know there's an urgency for registration. I also know if there are things that are decided upon at the November registration, is it for freshmen? Or, I know they said they would start freshmen, there was a counselor in the audience, is that correct? That, that the freshmen will be registering early in November, but the others won't be registering?
Yes, I, yes, Mr. Adrian.
Yes, seniors register first, they have the conversations just prior to Thanksgiving, and then we accept their, or their registration papers, the first part of November.
So if there was something...
Oh, sorry, December, first part of December, sorry.
December, okay. So if they registered in November, and there was something put in place that would allow them to do something that they're not going to be able to do in November, would it be able to adjust their schedules? If there were a handful of students that this would affect in December, would they be able to adjust their schedules?
Yeah, you could possibly do that.
Okay. Any other suggestions by board members or comments to what I'm saying?
Well, the only thing, and I think it's great to engage with the administration, and I think we've kind of put the cart before the horse with this meeting, but it, you know, shared the information, you know, with our educators, and so that's a positive. Meeting with, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if there's feedback.
Sure.
I, the suggestion that I made at the last board meeting about doing committee of the whole was because I thought a number of people would be interested, as I am, you know, with handbooks and, and changes and, you know, potential curriculum. I mean, I, I would like to be at that meeting as well, but would like to have the engagement with, you know, the educators in that, if that's possible. But I know that that, it would have to be posted. But committee of the whole may be the way to go again, just as long as we're getting the information that we need.
I think initially for them to meet, to map out a, a plan before the whole board sits down together would probably be the best way to start. I, I know, did you have a comment?
I have.
You agree, okay. Anyone else have any comments? Are you agreeable to this, Dr. Dearman?
This is on, yep, this is on. I don't have a problem with it. I think it would probably be best initially to kind of sit down, I mean, do we really need Karen and Ann maybe just to, with the Open Meetings Act, have Cheryl and Karen meet with me and kind of go through the suggestions that you've brought forth and, and get started that way?
Maybe it would work best if, you know, I handle the math and PE and, and then Cheryl or somebody else could be in on that meeting, and then, you know, Ann could address the others.
So have two separate meetings?
Could have two.
Or two different times, like, okay. That, that's...
That works.
That's fine. We just don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act.
Right. And I, I'm okay with having, you know, another committee of the whole meeting as well, if, you know, if, if people want to do that. But I know we've had a lot of meetings.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
I have one. I just want to go through the process again. So you're going to meet with Karen and Ann on respective things. At that point, are you going to establish a, a committee of parents and, okay? And what, what type of timeline are you looking, looking at for this?
Well, I've heard, by December. I don't have a hard timeline.
So when you meet with them, you won't have staff in that same room?
Not initially.
Why not?
Eventually.
Why not initially? I mean, I think it's better to see two people talking rather than this and that, not at the same time. I'd like to see them all at the same table. Does that work or not?
Yeah, that would work.
That's, that's, Tim, that's why I'm concerned about the timeline, to make sure, you know, I know you're looking at an aggressive timeline, so I want to see exactly what that is, because, you know, if you're meeting separately and then, you know, getting everyone involved, it may take more time than we, than we have, according to what you're saying, Karen.
And with some of this, I've already had conversation with Matt Andrews, with Jason Holmes, with John Allison, in regards to the math only, but some of this is already moving, so I think if we had those key players sitting at the table, we could probably, I, I know we're in somewhat of a time crunch, but we could expedite that process.
And I'm fine with having those staff members involved. I, I think that's productive, so.
So then initially, we'll have the meeting with Dr. Dearman. Perhaps that can get accomplished before our next board meeting, our official board meeting?
Official, okay.
If we need to move, if we need to move that board meeting back, that's possible as well, we can, we can consider that.
We've talked about that.
Okay, yeah, we, we've discussed that. So we'll proceed with that. Now, the, the next item on the agenda, I think we've already pretty much discussed. So if we could conclude the information discussion items, unless anyone else has a comment. All right, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn.
A second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, meeting is adjourned.